I call the March eighth, twenty twenty-three Bremerton City Council Study Session Order. The study session is open for the public to attend in person or view remotely, but there will be no opportunities for input. The content of these items is subject to change and no action is anticipated. Tonight's agenda was amended at General Counsel Business Item B six and the council packet was updated, amended and updated today to, sorry, updated on item A five. Any of the items approved for action by the council tonight will be placed on the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council Meeting Agenda. Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. And first up, we have item A one, lease modification number one with Willwind Properties LLC. And we have Contracts Administrator Melinda Monroe here to present. Welcome, Ms. Monroe.
Okay, this is new. So, thank you. Tonight I am presenting the Willwind Lease Renewal. In twenty twenty-one, the Wind Group, doing business as Willwind Properties, approached the city with a request to lease the vacant land next to their building at nineteen twenty-one Way.
Oh, microphone has been cut out there.
It should stay on. Okay. All right. Try not to break your leg here. So, after confirming with water resources and stormwater, there is no planned use for dislocation due to its proximity to the building at nineteen twenty-one Way, it was approved. Willwind currently has a site improvement plan under review with BCD, which will take into account the terms of this lease if approved. Part of the site improvement, Willwind Properties would like to extend this lease agreement until twenty thirty-two. And with that, they have the Amendment One or Modification One to the lease with Willwind Properties.
All right, thank you. Anybody have questions or comments? Michael.
Can you just say again, when, when did the first lease go back?
Um, it actually went.
Can you just give us a quick basic?
Yeah.
Quick basics of what are the details?
Sure, twenty twenty-one, and it was a two-year lease, which we were allowed to approve for them according to our BMC. It includes four parking stalls next to their, their current lease site at nineteen twenty-one Way. The site layout at the time, or proposed site layout at the time is attached to that lease. Since that time, they have come in with a site improvement plan and actually renovation to the building envelope. And would like to extend their lease in support of that plan.
Jennifer? Yeah, I was gonna ask, it doesn't look like it's currently in use right now, but they have plans and so they want to retain a lease on that property because that will include, that will be included in their plan. Okay, do we, do we know when something's gonna go in there?
I do not.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
It will depend on.
And I did have like a logistical question, you may or may not be able to answer it, but I was just interested because I saw that there is a line in there about the Seattle Area CPI. You, so like, do we normally use?
Sorry, can I ask the side chat to? Okay, thank you.
Do we normally use the Seattle Consumer Price Index when, in our figures? I guess that's something new that I haven't seen in our, maybe it is in there often, I just haven't seen it before. It's on. Page, it's actually just on page one of three of the lease modification. Plus a monthly amount of the Seattle Area CPIU increase.
Yeah, so we actually, we have it in, like you said, in four point one, in the monthly payment, and then we include as an annual adjustment. And it is a pretty standard term that we use for lease increases, just so that we aren't stuck with increased costs or maintenance without, without an increase to the payment.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Any other questions Denise, then my Anna?
Councilmember Goodnow pointed out to me that I should be paying better attention because this is in my district. That's what the sidebar was all about. I just wanted to confirm it. It appears that this is property that's being used by developers. They're redeveloping a piece of property or building. Is that?
Um, yes, they really are, yes.
So they're using it for their construction workers or, you know, whatever to park and I drive by there every day?
Um, that is a slightly different piece of property.
What do they use it for? And I'm sorry.
That's okay. They are management agent, agency, so they will probably be using it for real estate and, you know, a variety of other related business. But basically office and general business, you know, activities, so, yeah. Up to four. There is really only room for four legal parking stalls there, so. That would be the most thing we'd be able to use it for.
I'm trying to think where exactly this is. Do you have any?
Sure. Um, it's right across, I would say it's.
What's the hair salon?
Yep, right next to the, to the hair salon and right across the, the hard entrance there.
Okay. Thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Michael.
Anna.
Hey, good evening, Melinda. Um, so this is shoreline property, the, the city owns. And we had a two-year lease and now we're looking for a, um, eight, to extending it for another eight years. What is roughly the nature of, in other words, we're getting a couple of grand a year plus CPI to tie up a piece of shore love, shorefront property until twenty thirty-two, so there've got to be some pretty darned good improvements. What are they?
Um, so I'm not familiar with all their improvements or their site plan. Um, I do know that it includes the, the building envelope and they would want to pay the, the site. Um, and I think they're also gonna be, you know, making it legal parking stalls. I don't know if that is probably gonna need to include that ADA still.
Okay, yes. With these mics, they're kind of strange. Like, once you can hear your own voice coming out of them, then you're, then you're close enough. I, took me five tries to learn that. So, we have pervious area now and we're gonna change it to impervious area, right next to the shore?
Maybe. That is not necessarily a part of this lease that will depend on their approval of their site plan. So that really is enough to me to, to say if we will or will not.
Okay. Um, would they be willing, do you think, to accept a shorter lease term?
Um, they may be willing to do that.
Okay. Since we have a whole variable left out of the equation, which is we don't know what are the improvements they're gonna be making? Like, are they gonna put in a splash pad for all of the children of East Bremerton? Um, or since we don't know that, in, in my opinion, I, I would like to think about this. Is there some urgency to this particular one?
I don't believe that there is.
Excellent.
Yeah. I think we, we can, I, I mean, they have been sort of waiting a while as we've been going through their site improvement. But there isn't obviously any huge urgency for us. It isn't every day that we get an offer on a piece of property like this. That would be my only concern. But if we do have additional questions, I can certainly bring them back.
Okay.
And look into that, so.
Thank you. That, that would be my additional question is, could they get by with like just another two-year lease?
Well, I don't think that would be appropriate. I would say that they, with the site plans that they'd like to have passed, um, they wanted at least a five-year lease. I mean, they really wanted, you know, a full mother ten years. Um, we said, let's just make it a ten-year even from the start and see if that works for you. They agreed to that. So that's where we've been. I think that if they were, that would probably change their site plan. So a two-year lease. Probably would not be going to go forward with some of those improvements.
Thank you. Well, I, I'm just voting on this that I, I'd like to see the improvements before locking into another eight years. That's just me, one of seven.
Winner Eric, any comments? Well, I've got just a few and then I'll cycle back for another quick round. Just following up on that, so if they do, do any improvements to the property, does that come back to us for approval before they build or develop?
Um, that would depend on DCD.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would not necessarily go for you.
And then the old contract ended December twenty twenty-two, if I got that right. So are they, they're currently not using the property at the moment?
That's right. And they're in holdover, holdover status, which is in their current, which was in their current lease.
That's right. And then options, are we, are we able to sell this piece of property to them or anybody else? Is that an option or is the, I'm just weighing in the context of, you know, as I said, it's about three thousand year to the city, not a whole lot.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we do have a termination clause, actually in this lease. It's just a ninety-day, no-cause termination clause. So if at any point you do have an offer for sale that is more attractive, that's certainly something we can do and they actually are required to return the lease to prior conditions, so.
All right, good to know.
Yeah.
Denise and Michael?
Um, I'm, now that we've mentioned DCD, I'm interested in how this fits into the redevelopment that's going on along Wheaton and then up through District Two. So I'd hate to see people investing in a commercial space. I mean, that's prime, you know, waterfront residential space as well. So I'm just wondering, when these things come up, I mean, is it DCD that's working with you? They're, they're like, okay, this is cool. This fits into our plan. Uh, and if we ever wanna sell this, we can, just by pulling in. And I guess, you, do you know what I'm asking?
I, I think I do. And I would say that we did not. We are working with DCD. We did get DCD approval to move forward with the lease. Okay. So.
Okay. Then I'm gonna just ask Director Spencer, even though she, I know she's busy. Can you just confirm for me so that I feel more comfortable that, that this is part of, or is it is, uh, 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 what am I trying to say? It's not in conflict, thank you, with the overall planning and goals for that area?
So sorry, Director Spencer, do you mind coming to a mic or bring one to you? Or I can rephrase, but I'm gonna mess it up.
Andrea Spencer, Director of Community Development. Any cha, oftentimes the biggest challenge to getting buildings reused is having parking available. And the use, reuse of a building and what the proposal is, is more than likely consistent with the adopted zoning regulations. So having them have parking available in an adjacent place was gonna be the turning point to get a building actually revitalized and into use. So if it doesn't have parking, it's going to be another vacant building that sits there without any use. So I think this would be key to be able to move that forward for, for this revitalization of that building.
That is very helpful to me. Thank you, Director. And thank you, Melinda, for being patient with me.
Michael?
Okay, overall, I think it's a good idea. It's, it's been a dirt lot for a long time. We would generate some revenue. They're gonna fix it up. Now, I've just learned that we're gonna be able to reuse that building. Why do we own it in the first place? Do we need access to the shoreline? Is it just a leftover piece?
Um, yeah, it, it is actually one of those leftover pieces that we, as we became a charter city that we inherited from a variety of other sources, just put it that way, so.
They won't, will they have to pay tax, tax on the improvements they make to the land?
That is a good question. I think they probably will. They won't, as per this lease. Um, this lease only requires leasehold tax. Um, so that, but they, they may be paying taxes just on their, their lease on their building. Um, so we're not requiring anything more than leasehold tax, which is based on our, our leased amount of the site.
Right. I have been working for us. Nope, anyways, it seems to, it seems, it seems fine.
Okay, thank you.
So let me take a poll and see how many folks are comfortable this going to. Let me see if that people and, yeah, sorry. Are people in favor of consent or it sounds like there's still some outstanding questions? If you're in favor of consent, just give me a thumbs up. I don't see one. Okay, so then for general business, is there enough thumbs up to just go to general business next week? Or, uh, is there a majority wanting more questions or to go back with a different lease term? Yeah, I don't have a proposal.
I'd just like to get just a ballpark idea of what revitalizing a building means because I truly don't know. So, and if all of those improvements of revitalizing the building, will those all have to be rolled back? At the term, at the end of the lease?
Of not the building itself, because that will be a different parcel. But potentially the lot. Uh, the parking lot that is.
So they might take up all the paving?
Um, that more than likely will not be the outcome, but, uh, right, we, we could, we could potentially say yes. And please remove your parking lot.
So, um, Jeff, can I ask one follow-up?
Yeah, one question.
Sorry. So, the building belongs to them and that's on their land. Parking lot belongs to us. It's on our land. Yes, all right, finally, understanding. Okay, so nothing that they do to the building, it, it'll just revitalize the neighborhood. It won't be of benefit to us. And the parking is what they need to do in order to make that revitalization of the neighborhood possible. Correct. Okay, I would just, I'm happy to put this on general business and to let it move forward. Um, and again, I'm just voting. I just would really like to have a little bit of understanding of the revitalization. And otherwise, okay, you know, better to have occupation than just emptiness.
Excellent comments, good thoughts. All right, so this will go on general business, but, yeah. So I would say that is up to, I think, DCD Director Spencer has heard on his comments on wanting to understand the greater context of development of the region and it's up to her if she wants to present it next week at general business or, or not.
If I clear, the orders of the day are not the use of the building. The council doesn't have any, any authority over the use of building in permanent. So, um, the question of the day is, do you, will you allow this parcel that is adjacent to the building to use for parking? That's the question of the day. So there's nothing for me to respond to about the building.
So, fair enough, but which I'm fine with, so. Okay, so this is going general business for next week. All right, thank you so much, Ms. Monroe. All right, next up we have item A two, entitled Proposed Public Hearing and Resolution to Adopt the City's Share of the Kitsap County City of Bremerton Home Consortium Home ARP Allocation Plan. And CDBG Program Administrator Sir Lineham is here to present.
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to present today. Uh, we're gonna be looking at the Kitsap County City of Bremerton Home Consortium Home ARP Allocation Plan. Um, I'd also like to thank Executive Director Jill Stanton from Bremerton Housing Authority for joining me today. And she'll be available also if there are any questions specifically for, for BHA. Next slide, please. Just a quick overview of what we're reviewing this evening. First, how much funding is available, the regulations and requirements of this funding, consultations and needs assessment that were done. And then what that funding breakdown looks like between city and county and our other, and our public participation efforts. Next slide. The Kitsap County City of Bremerton Home Consortium has received two point six million dollars of home American Rescue Plan funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to address the need for housing and supportive services for families who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, or in other vulnerable populations. Of that two point six million Bremetons allocation will be eight hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Next slide. Funding is specifically meant for development and support of affordable rental housing, provision of supportive services, acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters, and tenant-based rental assistance. Additionally, funds must be used to benefit individuals who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. And other families requiring services or assistance to prevent homelessness or are at greater risk of housing instability due to low income and high housing cost burden, as well as veterans and their families that also meet the above criteria. Next slide. The allocation plan itself is a requirement for the county and city to receive funding. Per HUD's regulations, the allocation plan must include consultations with agencies who serve qualifying populations, a public participation process, an assessment of unmet needs and gaps in housing and shelter inventory, homeless assistance and services, and homelessness prevention service delivery system. It must also include a summary of the planned uses of the Home ARP funds for eligible activities based on the unmet need. Next slide. Kitsap County and the City of Bremerton consulted with Kitsap Housing and Homelessness Coalition, Kitsaps Continuing of Care, as well as other housing and service providers that address the needs of qualifying populations and organizations that address fair housing, civil rights, and the needs of people with disabilities. A presentation was made at the May eighteenth regular meeting of the Kitsap Housing and Homelessness Coalition, the, uh, twenty twenty, back in twenty twenty-two, sorry. Staff presented information on the Home ARP funds and feedback was encouraged by, uh, from coalition members. There was widespread consensus that the most urgent housing need is for more units of deeply affordable housing and supportive housing units. The most urgent services needed included case management, mental health and behavioral health counseling, transportation services, more housing navigators to help people navigate the housing system and remain housed, as well as financial assistance for housing such as deposits and first month's rent. Gaps identified included lack of affordable housing, lack of supportive housing units for those coming out of homelessness or with barriers. Also noted were the limited number of shelter beds, challenging housing referral system, lack of housing services for the most seriously mentally ill, and those with barriers like poor credit, criminal history, and poor rental history. And when asked what the top priority for this limited funding should be, the most common answer was investment in more affordable housing units. Next slide, please. There is a lot of data included in the needs assessment and gap analysis in the allocation plan. It's pages five through twenty of the allocation plan, so a lot of data. And these are just some major takeaways. Kitsap County had a shortage of five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two units of rental housing affordable to its extremely low-income renter households, so those earning less than thirty percent medium family income. About fifty percent of all Kitsap County renter households were cost-burdened, paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. In twenty twenty-one, there were one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight households meeting the, the, meeting the homeless definitions. And sixty-two percent of those households were literally homeless. Thirty-eight were at imminent risk of losing housing. Next slide, please. And this is just a quick timeline of our public participation process. The allocation plan was posted to our federal grants webpage and advertised in the Kitsap Sun for a fifteen-day comment period. We also encourage comments through social media posts and e-news flash for folks on the CDBG subscription list. And then we will also be sending out another e-news flash for the public hearing, for the proposed public hearing next week. Next slide, please. During the comment period, we did receive two public comments collected by Kitsap County. Both comments are included in your packet. They both highlight the need for more affordable and stable living situations for folks who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Next slide, please. Just kind of shows our funding breakdown, so that total two point six million and how it's broken down with the proposed projects. So to best address this urgent need for more units with limited funds available, both the city and county are committed to investing funds in the creation of new affordable housing units. In addition to the urgent need for more housing units, conversations with Bremerton Housing Authority point to the need for housing counselors to assist households with the utilization of housing choice vouchers. Currently, the housing voucher system is underutilized in Kitsap County. Many households who qualify for vouchers struggle to complete the necessary steps to secure housing. It has been determined that a housing navigator is needed to assist households with the process. Um, this would better utilize existing housing resources for many vulnerable households, including, uh, home ARP qualifying populations. The housing navigator position would be a fifty-fifty partnership with Kitsap County. And on the next slide, I, I'll show you what that looks like broken down, what the allocation is for Bremerton. Next slide, please. We'll see our total eight hundred and twenty-two thousand five thirty-eight and how it's broken down for, for each project. That total is less of forty, forty-one thousand dollar set aside for the allocation planning. That's a HUD, HUD requirement. Next slide, please. In partnership with Kitsap County and BHA, and in response to the need for services that help get more housing vouchers out into the community, four hundred and, four hundred and two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars would be set aside for a housing navigator position. It's a three-year salary and benefits, as well as a hundred thousand dollar commitment for additional security deposit assistance. The housing navigator would provide housing search assistance, assistance in implementation of leasing success strategies, provide high-quality customer service to applicants for BHA and housing Kitsaps housing programs. And again, this responds to an urgent need in our community and hopefully get more housing vouchers out into, onto Bremerton. Next slide, please. City's commitment for new rental units would support the creation of nine new affordable housing units. The city, uh, continuing its partnership with BHA will allocate its share of Home ARP funds to an existing rental development project in Bremerton. This project must serve the qualifying populations mentioned earlier and define in the allocation plan and most, most importantly, addresses a really urgent need in the community. Next slide, please. Um, as far as next steps, the proposed public hearing is scheduled for next Wednesday. And, um, this would be for just Bremerton's allocation as Kitsap County Board of Commissioners is taking separate action on Kitsap County's portion of the allocation plan. All I have. Um, I'm available for questions and then if there's any questions specifically for BHA. Executive Director Stanton is available as well.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Lyman. And, and Stan, I'll give you that opportunity. I don't know if you, if there's anything you wanted to say upfront about it or just wait for questions or comments. Perfect. And for those folks online, I'm just thanking city staff and just happy to be here.
And also just say thank you to Kitsap County staff for putting the allocation plan together.
All right, thanks to everybody.
Yes.
All right, council questions, comments? Denise and Jennifer? Unless this came through Finance Committee, but no, it didn't, right? No, okay, no, then, yeah. Trying to be, I'm trying to be proper. All right, Denise and Jennifer, go ahead.
Um, so I want some clarification on the navigator position because I'm familiar with Kitsap Community Resources Navigation Program. And, and I'm used to all housing navigation going through KCR. So is, I know you're in a big, wonderful partnership right now and I'm really excited about that. I think you know that. Very supportive of it. I also abhor duplication of services. And so, um, if, if you could explain to me, is there going, is there going to be, what's the separation going to be if Kitsap Community Resources still has a navigator uh, uh, position or program? How will that program work with, with this person? Uh, and will this person be a BHA employee? Uh, they're supporting also, I saw, Housing Kitsap. Um, so I, I'd just like to understand a little bit about how the partnership is gonna work with KCR.
Okay, good. That's a great question. So KCR does have a housing navigator position. That housing navigator doesn't specifically work with voucher holders. So, um, that is one of the places where they don't overlap. And just to give you a sense of, of the need here, we have eighty-four people currently shopping. They have a voucher, but they're looking for housing. And these are people that have challenges. And these are people that have challenges in a multiple way of finding housing. So this position would specifically work with the voucher holders for both Housing Kitsap and BHA. In addition, I think the need in Kitsap County for housing navigation services is greater than what KCR can provide. So we would anticipate that they would work very closely together. And we're, you know, we're getting calls all the time, all day long. The mayor gets emails which are forwarded to us for these specific services. So we would not limit it to just the voucher holders. But it primarily that it would be a BHA employee and they would be working with our voucher holders. But also, we want to be a bigger resource to the community.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So it appears that out of Bremerton's block, is it, is it going to be, is it just going into a big, the pot? And, you know, so are we funding support services and acquisition of housing? What does that eight hundred exactly go for? Or is it mingled with other, you know?
So the total, so the total for Bremerton would be, that's why I back up. Eight hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. There's a forty-one thousand that's a mandatory set aside from HUD for allocation planning. And then what is left is that housing navigator position, just four hundred and two thousand, is a fifty-fifty split between us and Kitsap County. And then what is left would be for creation of new housing units in partnership with BHA for an existing project.
Okay, that helps clarify it. And I don't know how I feel about us paying fifty percent and the county only paying fifty percent. But, but you know why, it's nice that they're, you know, gonna, gonna play. And it is Bremerton Housing Authority that has a lot more capacity, I believe, than Housing Kitsap. So I understand that. Again, the only leftover angst I have is when you got two agencies that are funneling needs, you know, you know, identification number, da-da-da. You know, just that duplication of services, whatever fraction of it is overlap is waste. And so whatever we can do to set up a system that, like, denies that at any point would be bad news. But other than that, I'm, I'm very supportive overall.
All right, Jennifer. Let your battery die, I'm gonna swap you.
Is it on? Oh, I just had to push the button the right way. Jeez, I'm good at pushing buttons. I mean, I have questions. So I really appreciated what Councilwoman Frye had to say about, you know, why are we doing fifty-fifty? Because they're getting one million eight hundred approximately, and we're getting eight hundred thousand. So I'm interested in exploring the idea. I mean, if a certain percentage, is this because a certain percentage is going to the rest of, it's going to Port Orchard, Baybridge Island, and Pauls Bow? And so is it based on the caseload or based on the money? Why is the money not proportionate to the services?
I'm gonna let Jill answer that question because she did a lot of work to
Thank you.
to kind of yield that very question.
Great. You got a calculation, don't you?
I do.
Good.
I'm glad I brought it. So we, what we looked at is where the vouchers are being distributed. We also looked at how many vouchers are in our county. And then we also looked at demographics from the most recent waitlist opening of our Housing Choice Voucher Program. And you might be interested to know that the Bremerton Housing Authority has approximately nineteen hundred, a little bit over nineteen hundred and fifty vouchers, whereas Housing Kitsap has just over four hundred. So we by far have a much larger voucher program. We also currently administer their vouchers. So the housing navigator would work for BHA, but would also be providing services for Housing Kitsap vouchers. If you look at how many vouchers were actually leased in twenty twenty-two, sixty-two percent of them were in the city of Bremerton, and the other thirty-eight percent scattered throughout Kitsap County. And then if you look at our voucher waitlist, fifty percent came from Bremerton and fifty percent came from other places in Kitsap County. Now, this doesn't count people that came from outside of the county. But if you're just looking at people in the county, it was about a fifty-fifty split. So, yeah, the county kind of had the same question. And this is, they actually came back with, well, we think fifty-fifty is a good, is a good allocation to share.
And so theoretically speaking, this housing navigator would have a caseload of seventeen hundred and seventy-eight or about nineteen hundred. Is that technically what the caseload would be for one person?
No, we currently
The number of vouchers.
It would be less because right now we have eighty-four shoppers. We are, of all, of our allocation of nineteen hundred, we have about fourteen hundred and fifty that are currently already leased. So the total amount of leasing potential in our county right now is five hundred and fifty-five. We would not have enough money to lease all of those in this year or even between this year and next year. But just to give you an idea, any one time, we have between twenty and a hundred shoppers.
Got it. Okay, that makes more sense to me. And so I have a few more questions. I'm gonna try to get through them here. On page forty-four of this, I love, I was telling you earlier, I love this document. It's, it's got amazing feedback. If you haven't looked through it, it's got amazing statistics. Page forty-four is all the different agencies. And so is this housing navigator only working with vouchers? Or will this housing navigator also be able to connect all of these? I mean, this isn't even a complete list with the feedback because some people had no response. So that's really my question is, are they going to be navigating multiple housing or just the voucher system?
Thank you. So the mayor actually had the same, brought up the same concern with me. So it would primarily be for the vouchers, but we will not turn anybody away. So right now, when people call, it's, we're providing them with a document that's a resource guide, but we're not able to provide them with just that human touch and somebody to talk with. So having this position would allow us to do that. The expectation would be that this, whoever's in this position would be very familiar with all of the resources in the county so that they would be able to direct people appropriately.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stanton. And Ms. Lyman, are you the one that put this document together? Was it just a collaborative effort? It's beautiful. It's got lots of great data.
I sure did not. I contributed in small ways, but Kitsap County staff really took the, took the brunt of putting this together because they will be administering this.
Thank you so much. So just some questions regarding, it says, in the introduction, we have the language of four families, but the funds actually allow for individuals and for families. And so I think my concern, when I look through the pages five to twenty that you mentioned, we have these statistics that show of the different segments, you know, fleeing domestic violence or the different segments, household composition of households served by coordinated entry location or mobile outreach. You know, what you can see is that an overwhelming number of individuals who face homelessness are single male and single female. And so that component has really been left out of the decision to create housing. And my personal opinion is it's more politically correct to find housing and support family housing than it is individuals that are out there. So I guess my hope had been that we get this large amount of money that we could do something for the largest metric of people that are in need, which is the single male and females rather than the families, which may not sound politically correct, but that's the largest need, right? So the data shows it.
For sure. And I think, and I'm not sure where, if there's a spot in here that just says families, but I think in the very first page, it does say qualifying individuals or families in a couple of different places, benefit qualifying individuals and families who are homeless, at risk of homelessness. So if that was a mission or something, it can be, yeah.
I'll share, I'll share the monitor too. So the, I feel like you need a mic. Housing voucher program is also for singles? Okay, so of this number of the, the people who are of the nineteen hundred or of the eighty-whatever still shopping, actually, let me ask that one. Of the people who are still shopping, how many are single individuals? Percentage roughly, you don't have to give me
Yeah, I don't have the exact number, but I will say it's a pretty large percentage that are single households. Over fifty percent.
And, okay, I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you for indulging me on them.
All right, Quinn?
Thank you. Thanks so much for this. I really appreciate the data and the work that's been put into it. Answers all the questions I have. One question that I have is, you know, this is a navigator pilot program. Is the intent, you know, I'm assuming that Congress isn't going to send us another rescue package anytime soon, but is the intent, hopefully, if there's success with the navigator program, to then shift the cost permanently to the city's general funds? Is that kind of the thinking past the three-year program? Or is there, and a fine answer is like, hey, we just want to wait and see what these three years do. But I am curious, is, you know, if it is successful, where do you think funding might come from?
Well, one thing to keep in mind is that, so we have five hundred and fifty-five available vouchers. That's very unique for a housing authority. Probably are the only one in the state of Washington that has that many vouchers available. So our hope and our dream would be in three years to be fully utilized, and we wouldn't need the level of navigation that we need now.
Got you.
But that being said, just to be fully transparent, we want more vouchers here. So we will apply for every voucher that we can. So there is a possibility that at the end of three years, if this is very successful, we've had housing navigation services for some of our other voucher programs that have been very successful. So it might be something that we look for more funding, whether it be through the city or, you know, I also think HUD has an obligation to not just give us vouchers, but to give us the money to actually utilize the vouchers.
I agree with you on that one. So.
Vanessa, sorry, real quick, Mayor, did you have a good one?
Yeah, actually.
Explanation of going forward, future funding?
Yeah, actually, Jill just said it perfectly. We'll have a good business case to present to you. And then we can weigh how we use those dollars for the navigator program versus what it costs to either purchase or construct new housing. And then we'll present a business case to you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Michael?
So, welcome, thanks. The navigator, they going to be able to, aside from sort of interfacing directly with the voucher recipient, are they going to be able to, like, contact landlords and try to bring them into the program and things like that?
Yes, that would be part of the plan.
That's my own question. This is great.
Any others? Let's see.
Thanks. This is a really excellent example of going out and asking people and correlating the data, asking intelligible questions, not too many of them, and correlating the data. And I was just really bowled over by that whole thing. Well done, you guys. If it's down to Kitsap County, then please pass it on. Whoever did it, whoever came up with it, that was really, I was so proud. I don't know if this is Jermaine, and if it's not Jermaine, you could give me a hint by saying, hey, that's not Jermaine. But I noticed that, I see the big hammer. I noticed that sixty-two percent of the vouchers are going to Bremerton and thirty-eight percent are going to the county, as you said. But on page forty-six, I note that sixty-nine percent of the money is going to the county and thirty-one percent to us. Is that just one of those discrepancies a person should just live with and keep moving?
So it's the money that is not just for vouchers, the Home Art money. It's, so we're using it because that's a way you can use it, but it's actually for other things.
Got it. Thank you. Again, my compliments.
Perfect. Oh, sure, it could be far, yeah. No, I just have a wrap-up question, so perfect.
Okay, yes, I also absolutely loved how much feedback you got. I know that there was a lot of no responses from the agency. One concern that I have about public outreach is that you're using forms of public outreach that aren't reaching homeless people. So what is your plan to actually reach homeless people to find out, gather data from them besides a public hearing and putting things on email or online? Was there, for instance, was there, even, some people have phones with internet. You know, they can go and get Wi-Fi, maybe they see it on social media, but I don't know if they're necessarily tuning into, you know, the city of Bremerton, you know what I mean? So can you help me out with that?
That's certainly a question I can ask county staff as well. Again, this is a coordinated effort, so, and they're, you know, in terms of reaching out to the organizations we reach out to, obviously, those organizations are serving vulnerable populations. And so, and it'd be continuing of care. And so the hope, I guess, would be that all of that would come together and provide us some good feedback. But I can certainly contact county staff and ask that question.
Yeah, and absolutely. And these agencies do good work. I think I, what I just want to make sure of is that we're of the mindset that not, that, that a houseless person can speak for themselves. They just need an opportunity for voice, right? And so I just want to encourage you to reach out to the county and ask what their plans are to directly contact houseless individuals for surveying in a way that's accessible, more accessible. And then I just was curious about why the plan was to have nine housing units and not to create more non-concrete shelter units, which would probably be more for individuals. Am I incorrect in that definition?
So the, the nine units for, going off of all the data and all the consultation that was done, the overwhelming need was for more units of affordable housing. And so that's where the city took that and said, this is, this is what we're going to do with these funds.
Are they available to individuals or families?
Individuals and families.
Okay, so they would be, like, an individual could use the voucher, like, a single male could use a voucher on one of the nine units that's proposed in this plan?
On these units, it would be open, the idea is that it's open to all vulnerable populations. So as long as those vulnerable populations are being served, then we're, then we're meeting that requirement.
Okay, I think, yeah, I was just curious because I don't know what size the units are. Like, if you're talking about a two- or three-bedroom, obviously, they're not going to give that to a single, you know, male. And so that's kind of where I'm getting at with it, right? Because you could say nine units, but that, that's not a lot of open units. And how can we maximize our dollar to get housing for the highest population without housing? And that seems like it would be through non-concrete. That's just my rationale, that's my logic, and maybe, and I'm not, you know, that's just what I'm thinking. No, that's okay.
Yeah, I wanted to reassure you, Counselor, the Stand By Me program that you invest in every year screens down at Ground Zero, there screens applicants who might be most ready to take on a responsibility of a housing voucher. And they provide all kinds of counseling services to assist if they're, if they're at that level. And we're definitely going to be working with Peninsula Community Health Services, who administrates that program. And absolutely, there's a lot of folks there, not enough, but there's a lot of folks who are ready for that step.
All right, thanks, Mayor. And let's, yeah, see if we can get, wrapping this one up just because we got a busy agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Maybe we'll talk later. Look like you still have some more to say. I appreciate you.
I always have more to say.
Girl. Okay, well, we'll talk someday.
Perfect. No, great questions and clarification on a large sum of money here. Okay, all right.
Director Spencer, I think we just found out where the whole fifty to sixty percent figure came from. If all the, if we're looking at all the vouchers that are available and fifty to sixty percent of them are in Bremerton, right? Then that's, that's, I believe, what was cited in that report. You know, and again, I think we need to always ask, what is the county doing to develop more affordable housing? I don't, I welcome it in Bremerton, I really do, going in my district. But county better step up with this. So that's at least my viewpoint.
All right, perfect. I was gonna echo, echo that as well. I'm always glad to see Bremerton do its fair share. I think we do far more than our fair share. But absolutely, there's, it's a big county and they can do their fair share as well. So this will go to a public hearing next week. My only question is every time a public hearing comes up, is if we get feedback from the public, I have nothing specific I would change, but if we hear something compelling, I just want to make sure we got the right mechanism, which is to either table it or to be able to make a table it or to be able to make an amendment and update this plan on the fly. I just want to be clear, the process going forward.
I think the process would be that we go back to Kitsap County and then with concerns or comments.
Okay.
I understand they're taking separate action on their, on their.
Okay, so the council, the council in that case, if we, if we saw something compelling, would basically vote no to pass at this moment, go back to the county, come back with something, with specific feedback. Okay. Always like to ask and unlike the scenario that it's clear. Sure, Director Spencer.
Just so that you understand some context, the home funds come to the county as a whole. They administer the program. We get an entitlement, but we don't run the program. So when you saw that number up there for the forty-one thousand dollars, that pays for Kitsap County staff to run the program. So you have to weigh in to say, yes, this is how we want to, that we want to spend our part of the asset. But you don't actually get to decide. Does that make sense? Because it's done as a consortium. So the county is in the role and the authority to do that. So they do look to you to pass motions and resolutions to, this is how we want to spend our money. But at the end of the day, because we're in a consortium, Kitsap County decides.
Okay, appreciate that clarification. Yeah, thank you. All right. So with that, we'll have the public hearing next week. And thank you both so much for all your hard work on this. And thank you to everyone in the county who may be listening in as well. All right, next up we have item A three, professional services agreement with Osborne Consulting, Inc. for the design of the Anderson Creek Dam removals project. And we have engineering project manager Gunnar Fredriksson here to present. Welcome. Take it away.
So, uh, what you have before you is approval of a contract for Osborne Consulting, Inc. Incorporated. They're going to be providing us permitting support and prepare bid ready plan specifications and engineer's estimate for the project along with, uh, construction support for it. A request for a proposal utilizing the MSRC roster was sent out to five consultants. OCI was selected based on their qualifications. Uh, the project consists of the removal of two nineteen twenties vintage old concrete earth and dam structures formerly used for a surface drinking su- water supply from the east and west forks of Anderson Creek. And I've got a map up on the screen. And, uh, as you can see, the two dams are located right here. This is the West Fork Dam, which is smaller of the two. And then the East Fork Dam, which is actually fairly substantial size. Both dam structures have not been utilized since the nineteen sixties. Fish and Wildlife considers them a total fish blockage. And, uh, would like to have them removed, uh, as well as we do, because they are somewhat of an attractive nuisance. This work builds on, and you might remember a few years ago, Wastad replaced all the culverts here at SR sixteen. So we will, uh, with us removing these dams, we will open up an additional three point two miles of stream and approximately forty-two thousand square yards of in-stream spawning and habitat for, uh, salmonoid species. We received a Public Works Trust Fund. Uh, we, we're notified of that in November, uh, for two million dollars. And that loan interest is one point three nine percent for twenty years to be paid for from the water funds. And that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Fantastic. We'll go to Public Works Chair, Anna.
Gunnar, I'm impressed that you found five consultants who had firms that combined all of these skills. Cause it's a lot. Really, really small thing on, uh, page seventy-two in the packet. You want to change commiserate to commensurate? Just to make sense, um, it's roughly, it's saying that, um, that the skills needed are, need to be proportional to the project. So that would be commensurate, but what you have is commiserate, which is like, you know, when you comfort somebody. So really small thing. Then on pages sixty-eight and six.
Anna, sorry, do you have a page number for that?
Yeah, it's page seventy-two.
Just so you can correct it.
It's page seventy-two in the packet. One moment.
Sorry, yeah. That way, uh, Steph can write it down and correct it if it's typo.
I'm not yelling. So, um, under the assumptions, uh, it's bullet point number one under assumptions mid-page, subtask six hundred point one.
I'm sorry, subtask?
Subtask six zero zero point one. And, uh, first assumption is that the level of detail described in the app would be commiserate with the complexity of the project. So it needs to be commensurate.
Okay.
Just can't, I, the girl can't help it. On pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine, I have slightly more substantive queries and I reviewed the language in the NWP twenty-seven, because that's all you're going to need for this, right? That, uh, the NWP twenty-seven from the core, you don't need to like get, um, they, they say they don't need to get any more permitting than that.
Correct.
Yeah.
The, in, uh, because it's freshwater, we're hoping that the permitting is going to be much simpler than like we're having the issues with Pine Road Basin where we've had Kermit's in for two years now and we still haven't heard anything.
Plus, it's, it's, it's actually, the whole project is helping fish, so that can't hurt.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that the, um, at the sixty percent design level, you'll have, uh, planting designs. I'd like counsel to review those or I myself to review those, whichever is better. Because, um, general, uh, general condition twenty-three sections D and E all specifically for native plants. I'd just like to make sure that while they're doing the site visits, that they're not doing anything fancy. They're just picking native plants that are already there.
Correct. And we like to do that anyways, just because they're the ones that survive. But what we'll also be doing with the design and we'll have on the webpage and we'll be posting the thirty, sixty and ninety percent design. So everybody gets a chance to take a look at it and let us know if they have any comments.
Who is better than you? I ask myself this. Thank you. That's even better. Will there be any way for a regular person to find out when the thirty and sixty percent designs are posted?
If they are following our webpage, um, they'll see that on the webpage.
So following the webpage is what'll do it.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Appreciate. Well done you.
And Anna just to check, does this go, this went through Public Works Committee and got thumbs up or?
No. Or the Anderson Creek did, uh, but not the, was Osborne Consulting presented and I slept here?
I think at that point we were selecting the consultants. We hadn't gotten the, the selection yet.
No, I just wanted to check on that. Jennifer.
Oh.
Um, I just have a really quick question. I'm excited about all the length of water that's going to be opened up for the fishies. Can you tell me again, uh, the length? Cause I missed it. You were talking about the culverts already have been removed and it's going to free up how many miles of?
Once these dams are removed, uh, between the two creeks, the east and west fork, it's about three point two miles.
Wow, okay. And then is this, I mean, salmon spawning or just general?
It's going to be for all species.
Okay.
So we'll see what, what comes up.
Thank you. That's all.
Questions? My only question was, was there other bids on this project or, um, was it just straight to Osborne Consulting?
Uh, of the five, we actually had three give us proposals, um, and that was Osborne, Parametrics and Stan Tech who did the original twenty seventeen report. But Osborne, uh, out of the three companies, Osborne was the only company that actually had dam removal experience in Washington State.
Okay, I noticed that language.
Yeah, dam removal experience in Connecticut and Parametrics had no dam removal experience, although they've got a ton of culvert experience.
Okay, that makes sense. I just saw the language about the, um, uh, yeah, it wasn't lowest bidder, it was most experienced. Um, so just checking on the low bid call. Okay. So basically the two bids didn't need specs by our qualifications.
They.
There's no issue with lowest bidder here, right? Yeah.
Correct. At that, we are, per the RCW, we cannot select a consultant based on bid. We have to, uh, select them based on qualifications.
Okay.
If we do have problems in negotiation with price, we can then go ahead and move to the second. But we start off with the first and we didn't have that much of a problem with negotiations.
Okay, excellent. Nope. Thanks for explaining that. Counsel, is consent for this item good? Hearing objections? All right, this has gone consent for next week.
Thank you.
Delighted, Mr. Frederick.
Yeah. Damn good work. All right. I can never, I can never resist a damn pun. All right. Good damn work. Oh, man. Thanks for stopping me there for a moment. All right. The mental, mental blockage. All right, next up is item A four, purchase of a John Deere Backhoe, an Elgin Street Sweeper and a Toro Contour mower. And we have internal services manager, Chris Motter, to present. Welcome, Mr. Motter.
Good evening. I am here to present the purchase of vehicles and equipment. There are three vehicles to be replaced within the city's fleet that have met replacement criteria and were approved by city council within the budget. These vehicle purchases exceed the hundred thousand dollar threshold, and that is why I'm here tonight for council approval of these purchases. These three vehicles will be purchased using the vehicle specific Sourcewell contract. Here is additional replacement criteria information for each vehicle. Replacement of vehicle three zero one nine, the Backhoe, criteria was met for replacement of age twenty-one years old per ERNR policy required, replacement of fifteen years and excessive wear, high equipment run hours and with high costs of repairs makes this a required replacement as approved within the twenty twenty-three budget. Replacement of vehicle one six zero three one six, the Street Sweeper, criteria was met for replacement of age seven years old per ERR policy, replacement of seven years and excessive wear, heavy use and run out and high run hours and the high cost of repairs makes this a required replacement as approved within the twenty twenty-three budget. Replacement of vehicle eight one eight zero zero, the mower, criteria was met for replacement of age fifteen years old per ERR policy, replacement of ten years and excessive wear, uh, high equipment hours and the high cost of maintenance and repairs makes this a required replacement as approved within the twenty twenty-two budget. The replacement backhoe assigned to the street division will be an equivalent, like kind backhoe model, John Deere three twenty P. And we'll have a quick coupler for the front loader bucket to allow for other city attachments such as pallet forks, sweeper broom, et cetera, for better job site work efficiency. New safety features of this backhoe are improved LED work lights, safety strobe lights and ergonomic machine controls for both front and back cabin to increase operator abilities. This new backhoe meets or exceeds tier four final emission standard. This will be purchased using the Sourcewell contract zero three two one one nine dash JD C and will come from Cafe Machinery of Tacoma, Washington. The replacement street sweeper assigned to the stormwater division will be an equivalent like kind sweeper model, Elgin Crosswind M two street sweeper. This new high performance model, single engine sweeper is a regenerative air unit that provides air blast to dislodge dirt and debris for improved street cleaning and increased efficiency. Has an eight point O cubic yard debris hopper with a lifeliner system for durability and longer life expectancy of the heavily utilized hopper system. New safety features of this sweeper are improved flashing beacons, Google strobes, backup alarm and convex mirrors. This new single engine sweeper meets all current federal tier five emission standards. This will be purchased using the Sourcewell contract number zero nine three zero two one dash E L G and will come from from Owen Equipment Tacoma, Washington. The replacement mower assigned to the parks department will be an equivalent like kind current model contour commercial mower. It is a, it is comparable in size and cut width. This new contour mower will replace the old wing style deck mower and will allow for safer mowing on slopes, hillsides and uneven surfaces at our city parks properties. The new style contour deck conforms to ground lawn surfaces and will provide for improved even grass cutting and will be more efficient. This new mower meets all tier four final emission standards. This will be purchased using the Sourcewell contract number zero five two one eight and will come from Turf Star Western from Kent, Washington. Purchase costs including tax are a hundred and fifty-four thousand, hundred and seven dollars and thirty-nine cents for the new John Deere backhoe three twenty P, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents for the Elgin Crosswind M two street sweeper and a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-one cents for the Toro Ground Master forty-five hundred mower for a total purchase amount of seven hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents for these replacement vehicles and equipment. The approved budget amounts for purchase was five hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-three with the remaining purchase amount to be funded by the ERR fund five ten. There is sufficient funds within the ERR budget to cover the remaining costs. We do expect a surplus sale value of approximately eighteen thousand dollars for the replaced equipment after the new vehicles are in city service. Due to recent cost inflation issues causing higher than anticipated prices for vehicles and equipment, we have experienced these higher cost purchase proposals. But with best available pricing by the Sourcewell contract, we would like to get council approval of these purchases and place our orders as soon as possible, possible to avoid any future price increases. I'm available to answer any questions you may have on the side.
Thank you, Mr. Motter. Just to check, did this go through any committee for speeding? Okay, perfect. It's done. Finance.
Yeah, it came through finance committee. Thank you, um, for Motter. Um, and so just to kind of summarize, first of all, are we reporting? Are we okay? I just noticed, okay, cool. Want to make sure we're all good to go on that. So just to kind of summarize what y'all heard is, uh, it doesn't really have any fiscal impact to us except, um, what, what originally was budgeted. Uh, we're about a hundred and some odd short and all of the rest of the funds, um, the equipment is going to be covered by the respective budgets. So Public Works, Parks Department, um, and, uh, the rest is going to come from the ERR fund. And I just was hoping to get some clarification on what the ERR fund is. So maybe Director Riley can help us out.
Sure, happy to. So it's a kind of a savings account for each of our, our funds that we put money into each year. Um, based on what I think the replacement factor for our fleet is. So every year each fund contributes money to replace that whatever the going rate is, is, uh, Chris talked about tonight, uh, each one of these rigs have different life cycles. So if it's a fifteen year cycle, we straight, uh, uh, straight line, appreciate that, like over fifteen years with a, with a factor for, um, CPI. So, uh, that fund sits there. So when these vehicles need to be purchased, they're purchased out of that fund. And then the respective funds each year contribute the replacement factor, um, when you approve your budget. So all of these, uh, vehicles we purchase out of it, five, ten ERNR fund, there's adequate funding in that fund per the respective departments. There's not a need to fund additional funds from the respective departments this year.
ER stands for equipment rental and repair?
Replacement reserve.
Equipment replacement reserve. Um, and this did come through finance and we did give the head nod for it. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing, sorry, Anna, was that a yes or? Yes, go ahead.
I know, I, I wish I could just use Shakespeare voice. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Motter, for your presentation. So the contour mower is replacing a contour mower?
Um, it's, it's, uh, replacing a, a more of a deck mower that would come down with the, the decks on each side. And this is a contour one with individual kind of, uh, mowing decks that would contour better to the.
So it's an upgrade?
It is the same cutting width.
I see.
And size wise, it is comparable as an equivalent. Um, the, the, the deck mower, uh, isn't available in the size that what is really required for parks. So it's a, it's a equivalent in size and in, uh, uh, cut width.
Okay, I'm just surprised because the idea that Director Elevato would permit anything to be uneven in the parks and thus requiring a contour mower is so foreign to me. But, okay, so this sounds like a fun thing and I like that, you know, the equipment has radios in it. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I just like it.
All right.
Yeah, it's a normal thing. Thank you very much. That was all my question.
All right, folks, get us consent for this one. All right, perfect. Thank you for, Mr. Motter, for coming well equipped for the discussion. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can try for a pun on everyone now. With the equipment, okay. All right, next up we have item A five, contract modification agreement number two with Parametrics, Inc. for the decommissioned beach sewer and manet. OF dash four to EB dash two. OF dash four to EB dash two project managing engineer, Bill Davis is here to present. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Remerton City Council, and this was presented to Public Works Committee on the twenty first. So I'm here tonight to talk about the contract modification number two with Parametrics for the, uh, decommissioning of beach sewer and Manette project. So this is a, a loan funded project by Department of Ecology. And, uh, next slide please. Uh, just a little bit of background for those that aren't familiar with the project is located in Manette between the bridge and East Sixteenth Street. We're decommissioning nineteen hundred feet of beach sewer, uh, in that area. There's approximately thirteen sanitary sewer lateral connections there that we're going to be disconnecting. So they include condominiums, some apartments, as well as single family residences. So I wanted to give you a detailed breakdown of what we're going to be doing for this contract modification and what it adds up to. So there's, uh, multiple tasks associated with this design and, uh, starting out with detailed design, we're adding approximately forty thousand dollars to the contract. And the most significant component of this is that we're adding a ninety percent design phase. In most projects, um, projects are, they have design phases of thirty, sixty, ninety, and then final design. Uh, because we had recently done a design with parametrics on the Westray Beach Sewer, which was a much more complex and large project. We thought that we could do, um, a shorter design period to get it accomplished, delivered quicker. Um, but because of the complexities of this project and we added a city pump station, which I'll talk about, we thought it would be a good idea to add the ninety percent design to the contract. So we have time to, to do the ninety percent design because of delays from cultural resources. The second item is, it's a smaller item outreach. We added an additional public outreach just because of the cultural resources issues in the event that parametrics is to support us with preparing exhibits. I'm in documentation for, um, any additional public outreach that we might do on the project. And here's the, the biggie right here, the environmental permitting and cultural resources is, is a subset of environmental permitting. It's, um, in order to get federal permits, there's a process that has to be gone through called section one oh six where, um, there has to be a consultation where a firm, an archaeologist goes out to a site and does some excavation and identifies whether or not there's areas of concern. And in May of twenty twenty two, the sub consultant, cultural resources consultants, uh, they were a sub consultant to parametrics. I discovered an intact, uh, shell midden on one of the properties. And they also identified that some of the work was in an area, uh, KP forty five, it's, it's, we refer to it as the Manette site and it's, it's listed on the state register. Uh, so it immediately elevated, um, cultural resources concerns on this project. And in June, we had a pre consultation meeting with the Department of Ecology, which they consulted with the Saquamish tribe as well as the Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation. So there were a lot of stakeholders involved. Uh, there were subsequent meetings and there was a work plan that was developed specifically for a phased work plan. So any work that occurred within the Manette site had to be done, um, with archaeologists, archaeologists monitoring the work. So it's, and it's going to continue to be that way. When we go into the, the phase three of the work for the construction, we'll have to be archaeologists out there during the work. So, um, none of us have had this level of scrutiny before as far as archaeological, uh, scrutiny on a project. So, um, we're, we appreciate the support. We hired, another thing happened, cultural resources consultant quit, that consultant quit. So, um, parametrics had to hire a new consultant, which took time for them to get up to speed, but they've been very resourceful and helpful for us. So, um, one of the side benefits of all this is that there's more, um, I would say there's more collaboration with Saquamish tribe. They actually recently provided some input on a development project that we did in the area. You know, gave us some insight and helped us put together inadvertent discovery plan in the event that anything was discovered during the excavation of a, of the water main connection. Uh, and then there's another component of the environmental permitting is that one of the houses in particular was very low, right above the water. It was three stories and the lowest level, we had very, very difficult time coming up the design for how we were going to install the grinder pump. Um, initially we decided we were going to put it on the beach, which triggered, um, different permit requirements, which weren't scoped under parent, under parametrics original scope. So it triggered more permitting. Again, it was iterative. We went back and forth and ultimately we, we've gotten it off the beach. But they were going down that path for a while of developing, putting together permits that were, were based on a permanent impacts to the beach. The next item is services during construction. Uh, because of all the work that was occurring, we, this was services during construction, that particular task doesn't really start to activate until construction is occurring. Parametric supports us during the work. We took money from that task and allocated it to the permit permitting. So we just needed to keep moving in the process. Um, that, they also did a small portion that was electrical design. And so this money there replenishes that task. There was project management because of the increased scope as well as the, you know, adding twelve months to the project, there's going to be more project management, just time and more deliverables. So we added money to that task, uh, electrical, electrical support. We added money for instrumentation and control drawings, which show specific connections within the control panel at the request of our wastewater treatment plant staff, and those will be used as ways as record drawings. It, it also the impact on the ninety percent design and then management reserve, we replenished that. Originally that was fifty thousand dollars and what management reserve is for is, is when, uh, differing site conditions or new scope is added to the contract. Uh, it, it's just, it's at the discretion of the project manager to take that money and allocate it to that new work. There's a negotiation that occurs, the consultant puts together a scope of work and a budget. And there's a negotiation that occurs and then we allocate that money. So we use that money for, um, hiring that new consultant, thirty eight thousand toward that new consultant and ten thousand of it towards parametrics. So that fifty thousand dollars allocated. So, um, I'm requesting that twenty thousand dollars of that be replenished in the event that we discover future differing site conditions, which could very well be likely. So that's it. Um, one more slide. And then the impact on the schedule. Um, originally we were intending to instruct, construct starting in early twenty twenty three. But because of these impacts, um, on permitting and cultural resources issues, it's been pushed out twelve months. So it's a, oh, a big impact on the project and the project management and how we can deliver this project. Thank you.
Excellent. No, thank you, Mr. Davis, for that update. This went through public works. As you mentioned, Anna, the other floor, if you want to brief on it.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. She heard my sob story. Um, just you guys, I'm sorry, public works went into this to, to be proactive. You, you know, you said there's a beach sewer, beach sewer bed, let's set up grinder pumps and, and have upland sewers, right? So I'm just making triply sure, Bill, that pushing it out twelve months isn't likely to trigger some incident, which would really be the cherry on top.
No, it shouldn't. It's, this is more about access, you know, it's just difficult to access. The only access is by the Bochard restaurant and that's during a low tide. So, um, this will, we'll never have to worry about that again when this goes offline.
Avert. Okay, um, thank you very much. And again, I'm so sorry that this project is going on and on.
Any other comments, questions? I'll just say being, well, the question being in district, I, from my recollection, you're basically in regular contact with all the homeowners that are individually affected on this project and they'll get updates on the timeline and, and to expect any effects when work occurs.
Yes, and, and when we, um, when we forward the contract, we'll have another meeting with, with everyone just to let them know what's going on before they start seeing excavators show up.
Excellent. Now fantastic. Yeah, good to see the money for the public outreach there. Um, yeah, for folks that don't know, if you walk across the minute bridge, there's a marker on the other side, which, um, you know, it's a Native American, you know, settlement that was right in that, right in that area. So, um, great to hear that the Squamish were involved and stakeholders and giving input and, um, the archaeological oversight of the project. So thank you for managing this, um, council, everyone good with consent? All right, all thumbs up. Thank you, Mr. Davis, and it's gonna be on consent for next week. Hey, perfect timing. I think we'll do the next item and take a quick break. Um, so next we have item A six, uh, ordinance to repeal and replace section nine A dot thirty two dot one forty of the Brown's municipal code currently entitled cyber stalking. City Attorney Fennell is here to present. Fennell, Fennell, Fennell. I am so sorry. I'll get it right one of these years.
That's all right, President Coghlan.
A long story there. I won't even get into. My brother pronounces a coglan. I pronounce a cofflin. Yeah, we diverged. Anyway, attorney Fennell, take it away.
All right. So, so this is really a housekeeping, um, issue. We have cyber stalking in our Remerton Municipal Code right now. But the legislature in this, um, last year separated out the RCW, um, into, um, cyber stalking and cyber harassment separately. Um, and then in reviewing that and making sure that we had the correct reference in our code, um, we realized that that spooking had also been added that we had never adopted. We don't have that as like a huge need, um, on the spooking, but we thought we might as well add it. But the cyber stalking and then cyber harassment are issues. And just so you know how this works is when, when we haven't adopted the state code, um, if those crimes happen in our city, they, they don't go unprosecuted. So don't worry. I mean, it doesn't mean people have gone free or victims haven't had relief. They get referred to the county because they have concurrent jurisdiction. And so, um, one of these came out, we realized that we had the wrong citation and we're here to correct it. And so, um, the amendment would just make it to where our, um, code that changes it from cyber stalking, because it's now called the Washington Cyber Crime Act. Um, it adopts the definition section from the RCW, adds spoofing, electronic data tampering, and then the two citations to cyber harassment and cyber stalking. There are gross misdemeanors that are, um, things that we can prosecute locally. And so we want to mind our codes that we can do so if it comes up.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on this? See you in any, I see a brief hesitate, go for it.
Uh, yeah, came through, yeah, came through public stage. We gave it the head nod to keep on going, but, um, what is spooking? I'm Googling it right now, but I.
You don't have to Google it. I had it ready. I was hoping someone would have. Cause, um, okay, so that is the practice where someone will, um, lift your, uh, like login information. Uh, so I'll read it. A person is guilty of spoofing if he or she without authorization knowingly initiates the transmission, display or receipt of the identifying information of another organization or person for the purpose of gaining unauthorized access to electronic data, a data system or data network with the intent to commit another crime violation of state law, not included in this chapter.
So when somebody steals a password for like your random account and then they use that information to get larger information, like they get your email into your email, that sort of thing.
That kind of thing. Like I said, I don't think this is one that we type them up, but.
Michael. So sorry, uh, microphone just for, for some line, I know.
And maybe you shouldn't.
Yeah.
Aggress each other at a study session.
No, I was gonna, sorry, I should go, but I should be, thank you.
Yes, we are.
I hope.
We don't usually have microphones in a study session.
I like that.
I'll go, we want to do it.
Somebody spoofs themselves to pretend to be somebody else.
Okay.
So, yeah, like, I think it's, it's just being dishonest with your computer. I'm just kidding, there's a little bit more to it, but.
Well, don't look at my driver's license information either, because that might apply to the weight.
It, it's basically making, um, getting access without authorization for the purpose of.
And, and I just wanted, I know you had pulled it because at least the one that you were working on, because you wanted to update it to be more in line. This is just coming in line with the Washington state law so that we can prosecute within our city because it is a gross demeanor, which is under our, okay. Um, is there any benefit to keeping it in our municipal courts as opposed to? Cause we couldn't, wouldn't it be under KC jurisdiction if we didn't have? Or we already have a law in place for updating it. Can you just clarify those?
Right. So right now we have cyber stalking, but it references the wrong RCW that because they've changed the, the numbering and so it, it references the wrong one. Um, so we, we couldn't prosecute this locally because our code is, is wrong. And so if we tried, someone would point that out and they would get their case dismissed. Um, and so the, the, the reason that we, we do that is that we have a prosecutor's office and, um, we have a municipal court. And so we want to have the ability to put those cases into our system instead of pushing them over to the county. If, um, if, I mean, like there have been circumstances where like cities have completely repealed their municipal, like criminal code as a way to divert cases to the county instead of their own courts. So, um, those are like things that they're, that get into a whole other issue where like, but per one or two cases here and there, they don't mind when we send them over. If it was something where we were doing it more deliberately, then they would, there was, there's a provision in the RCW that we could actually be forced into arbitration to start paying.
Okay. Thank you very much for explaining all that. That's all.
Excellent. All right, consent. Consent it is. All right. Thank you so much, Attorney Fennell. Uh, getting close to an hour and a half and we're about the end of the section A, so folks feel good with reconvening at six thirty five? All right, ten minute break, six thirty five. Thirty five. All right, I'll go back to the meeting here. Now in general council business and up first is B one. Audit Committee Chairman Mokler to provide a summary of highlights of the recent audit committee meetings, okay, meetings on February twenty seventh and March sixth. Sorry, microphone.
Um, so during the audit committee, we received the draft budget memo, um, which we had selected as the place where we wanted to, the first thing we wanted to start working on. The whole parking thing has been pushed forward due to negotiations till at least this fall. So we needed a, a topic to begin work on. Um, and Quinn is right here to check me if I go wrong. So we reviewed that, but there had been a glitch and it had been received less than twenty four hours before the meeting. So we tentatively approved the budget committee draft memo. Um, but we then had a special meeting this past Monday in which we unanimously approved the budget draft memo. It, hang about, please. Uh, it made several suggestions that I had understood, um, from council. Sorry, the memo I sent you did not open, um, that I had understood after the budget workshops last year had proceeded from council. Um, it, Eric, uh, suggested that we involve the public more fully, make certain that public engagement could happen. Part of that was just technical and we didn't bring it up because the microphones weren't fully functioning. But also there wasn't really that much time. Um, I proposed, and these are things that I thought were the general consensus of council, and so I'm bringing them back to you. They're in the memo and I'm, but I'm bringing them back to you at this time. Um, beginning, beginning work, lengthening the time between when the budget drops and when the bud, final Q and A comes. So that we're not dealing with a fire hose of information, even though we're better at it this year than we were last, or I at least. Um, it's, it's still, it's a lot of information and it's difficult for us, I, I believe, to make a thoughtful review. So one possibility is to break out, you know, how at the beginning of the budget presentations, people would come and say, this is my department, this is our department, this is what we do. These are the projects we're currently working on. This is what we want to work on next year. Well, that's all informational and doesn't necessarily require finance. So those, um, I, I proposed could be, um, pushed back, you know, into September or even August. And once you actually get the memo in a form that you can read, I'm so sorry, um, you'll see that, uh, Jenny Sims, the auditor pulled together a lot of comparisons to local jurisdictions and to the great and good, uh, Roseville, Minnesota, um, which has a particularly accent excellent budget presentation. Um, Bainbridge Island has a fantastic budget. Here's the thing, Bainbridge Island has ten people who do nothing all year, but work on the budget and work on. Bainbridge Island has a fantastic budget. Here's the thing, Bainbridge Island has ten people who do nothing all year, but work on the budget and work on presenting it. So I made those two suggestions, feeling that they would be in line with what council was looking for as a way to make the budget to give us a chance to do more thoughtful review. And in fact, one new member of the committee hadn't, they had been, they said the community was very upset at how council dealt with the budget. They had not been aware that we saw it when the public saw it. So I think that this would be directly helpful to the community. So I will send this to you again. I just discovered that the link was broken. It's several pages and I think you'll agree that Jenny did really excellent job of finding similarities and doing comparisons. And that's about it, except that since it's now almost mid-March, if we're going to adopt some of these suggestions, I strongly urge that we take it up at either the next meeting.
Actually, I had a general business item which ties right into this, which was I talked to Director Riley about options. And he briefed me what's been done in the past. And if I got it right, Director Riley, one option is Monday of the start of Budget Week, we could dive into the general, have our regular Wednesday council meeting, Thursday, get the brain downloads from Public Works, and then have all week and the following Thursday, do our deliberation to add an extra week in there. Was an option that if, make sure I got that right. And then I was going to ask council if they were good with that, since they need to schedule up the year.
Yeah, that is correct. There's a little nuance in the following week. On Wednesday of that week, we actually take action on rates and fees and property tax. So you would actually be voting on an item prior to deliberating on the complete budget. So we could make an adjustment to move the Thursday proposed deliberations to a Tuesday or to a Monday. That way you're not voting on something. We've done that in the past. We've actually voted before on rates and fees and then went to deliberations on Thursday. It just makes it a little bit kind of awkward when you're, when you're voting on revenue sources and then deliberating on the complete budget. So, but either way, it's fine. But it would be in the following week.
I'll go right to you on if that was in line with audit recommendation.
Okay. Can you guys, can we put a pin in this while I go and dig up the correct link so that I can actually send it to? Do you have it, Christine, to be able to send it to council?
It will, yeah, I think Christine said it will be available shortly.
It will be available like shortly, within a minute?
I don't know.
No, no, I just want to make sure that everybody has it now. And for me.
Good, so we'll get the, we'll get the memo soon. But I think I was looking for, yeah, feedback on doing that different scheduling to allow more time. If folks liked it or not, just because I think we do want to move on setting that schedule now, this far in advance. Yeah, Michael. Right. Yeah, that, and it's, sorry, I just realized, microphone. So Michael made the point that we, when the administration finishes, it goes out to everybody at once. Yeah. Right. So the proposal is to do it so that we just have an extra week of after we get the brain download, after we see the budget. Council has a week to talk to the public, get feedback and deliberate and, you know, and think about it more ourselves before we go straight into the deliberation. Jennifer, come back to Anna.
I feel like I'm, maybe I'm even stealing Councilman Younger's thunder, but we don't always have to wait for a budget. We can propose a budget as council too. So that's something for y'all to consider as we're thinking about budget season.
Yeah, I just want to keep this really scoped on the, that week there, that week or two. Certainly, we can talk budget and requests way in advance, but this is just specifically for setting up that week for staff. I'm not hearing any objections.
Yeah, whatever gives more transparency and more opportunity for the public to weigh in as well, I'm, I'm all for. And it doesn't, it doesn't really change anything, does it? It just extends, it still fits within any requirements we have and.
Right, yeah, we can't, we can't spend two months on it, but this would allow extra time. I'm sorry, I saw Eric, come back to Anna.
Perhaps it's a marginal improvement. I wouldn't, I would suggest you don't make a decision tonight. I would suggest you run this by Lori Smith. There's, the budget dates are set the way they are for a reason. And I know Mike's got good insight on this. The, the main, the main point of this, in my opinion, is building on what Jennifer said. We heard last fall from the public expressing frustration that basically this was a done deal. I felt this way for years as a council member that you get this big budget, however, hundreds of millions of dollars. And it just never, I just shake my head every year going, we're arguing over twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's, you know, I think last year I was literally banging my head on the table for some items. But the, the point is the council's wishes should be expressed to the administration and the publics. They don't have as much opportunity as we do. We don't express what we want in the next budget, shame on us. The council doesn't have that, or the public doesn't have that ability. So we should be requesting well beforehand, public's input. Here's our current budget. You have any suggestions? If we're sincere about public outreach, we need to be proactive. I don't care about moving up two days a week or whatever for the whole budget process. But if we really want public opinion, if that's what we're saying, well, gosh darn it, let's do it. And then council should be talking through the council president, we should have study sessions saying, this is what I'd like to see in next year's budget, give it to administration, have them work with it. And then they can tell us why they didn't incorporate in the budget instead of giving us a budget saying, here it is. And then we fight over twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the point.
So here's my suggestion is to go through Finance Committee for start talking about some of that extra public outreach, how to maybe coordinate some of that, see what the bandwidth is. Because as I said, we don't have enough staff in the city, but I absolutely like that. And then I guess the decision I'm looking for doesn't affect any of that. We can be talking with the council. Right now I've got the, there's a fifth Wednesday in May I've got set aside if we want to use it to talk budget in advance, which I think is a great idea. But I don't see there's any objections to shifting this back to give at least an extra week for, for nothing else, us as a council to absorb all the information and propose budget and take, take changes. Quinn?
I don't, I don't have an objection to that. I just think a decision should be held off until everybody has a chance to digest Jenny's memo because it did include some really great recommendations, including adding visuals. There were, there were things other than just timing. So I'd like everybody to, to see that work product before we make a decision.
Director Riley, is that all right, wait two weeks, is that going to affect the?
No, not, not on the calendar. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that as Councilmember Younger just pointed out, the, the process of the dates of the budget, when the budget gets released, when we have to adopt, there's not a lot of wiggle room. It's, it's set. You have to adopt before December first. But we, the proposal that Council President proposed is what we did three years ago. We went to one week session the year after that, got great feedback, said the information was ready, available and in their head. So by the time we delivered it, they knew what we talked about. We followed that up, got great feedback. And now we're kind of back saving one more time. So we're flexible within those two weeks. I've read the memo from the Audit's Office or the Auditor, which I think is very useful. It's got a lot of the information. I will say some of the comparable comparables have large budget teams to recognize that. We have a team of one and then myself. Obviously, the city as a whole, there's a lot of work to put that together. The timelines are tight, it's a lot of information. So and also one of the things they highlight in there is we're talking about outreach. It's council member budget, like town hall outreach. It's not the staff going out. It's getting, if you want something early, again, I would recommend you make a decision early that you're doing town halls and asking what the public wants. And then we can hear that because it's the mayor's budget that we're proposing and that turns into the council budget. I will say the mayor's budget is based on our priorities and goals that are set at our retreat and also the kind of mayor's initiatives throughout the year. That's how we derive the budget. And I don't think last year's was too deviated from what I think we heard from council. So that's kind of the information we take as we compile it. But it'd be much, yeah, the information early because we're starting personnel budgeting, starting in two weeks and we're in the budget mode. So sooner the better, but two weeks isn't going to hurt anything. So, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So let's postpone that decision on, on what to do with Budget Week for two weeks and keep talking through Finance and in our next council meetings about how to do outreach more early and often. Does that sound like a plan? Okay, perfect. Sorry, back to you to close that auditor and then we'll keep moving here.
Okay, so I, I have the memo, but it is in Korean.
All right. No worries. Okay, so that'll get distributed and anything else on Audit Committee, Anna or?
Go figure. I think that there's a lot in the memo that very clearly defines what the, the end date, like when we have to be done with the budget.
I really, I think we, we hammered this subject. So if there's anything else non-budget from audit.
Yeah, but that, so please read the memo and what kind of, just asking, are we going to put this on as regular agenda items?
Let's revisit this in two weeks, back into general council business and we'll give direction on the, on the timeline. Sorry, Eric, yeah.
Just real quickly, I'd like some feedback on what a two-year budget would look like if the city would consider that. Pros and cons.
Fair enough. Okay, let's talk about that in two weeks as well. Okay. All right, let's go now to Finance Chair Jennifer Chamberlain. The meeting goes on February twentieth.
February, I have February twenty-eighth, so I have that date now, February twenty eighth.
Yep.
Yep. Oh, that's a zero, okay. And so, well, we, one of the issues was already on our, we're going to have an on consent agenda for the materials, but we had a really great update on the Cartograph Asset Management System by our fantastic asset manager, Terrell Brown. And we learned a little bit about what they're doing with that asset management system now. Right now, they, that system measures and manages water resources, utilities, wastewater. Some of the assets of the city include streets, water, power lines, et cetera, things like that. There is a timeframe to integrate more systems for all the public works and the Parks Department. It's six to seven years to integrate that. And so I think, and we got a, we did get an update on our investment spreadsheet, our portfolio. But I think some of the really interesting discussion was in our other business. We talked about, does the condo model make sense for the Norm Dicks Building anymore? Had a couple perspectives on that. Basically, if you don't know what the condo model is for, for the Norm Dicks Building, government agencies are renting different floors. It's under contract that, that you have to be, you know, government entity to rent one floor here. And so we had an interesting discussion on that. We had a parking update. It looks like there's going to be in the future, some, there's new signage at the conference center, but they're going to have future opportunities. You can actually go online and see if there's parking available at these places. And we talked about, we've talked a little about the port parking too, which isn't in our jurisdiction necessarily, but looks like some of that parking was diverted to the new Marina Square. So all good stuff with parking. I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. I'll go to Public Safety Committee Chair Denise Frye.
Yes, thank you. We were joined by both, both chiefs, both Chief McGannan and Chief Wolf. And as you can imagine, the discussion continued in support of the, of the levy. We heard from Chief Wolf, another, it was great to have him there. But another verbal took it, took us through it verbally. I think that Councilperson Chamberlain enjoyed not being chair, so she could, you know, ask some, some good questions. And the chief was great. He actually said during the meeting that he welcomed, that he really welcomed, what he called leaning in. So there was some really good dialogue, I thought. Adding Chief Wolf's perspective to Chief McGannan's. At the end of that, I, we got the impression that they are now working with you. Is that right, Attorney Fennel? I kept asking presentation, presentation, presentation. We need one pager, we need, you know, whatever it distilled. And so this actually brings up, I wanted to, this isn't only particularly to public safety, but I did want it to get it out here that, you know, I'm seeing pretty consistently that we need presentation skills. And, and the ability to take a whole lot of information and distill it and spit it out to the right audience so that it'll resonate, people will understand it. I don't know whether our city attorney is the appropriate person to do that. I really respect you, Kylie, but I don't know.
Keep your Jermaine here a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. And so for me, it goes right into what council recommended in its retreat and that was we've got to have some kind of communications position that can kind of set some parameters around this so that it, you know, before we get to that.
Blood and clear. I'm going to keep you back to Jermaine, the public safety briefing, but.
Well, that, it. Yeah, it, we spent a long time listening to a lot of information. And so I look forward, I think we all do, to getting that in a, in a more understandable method. And then we also brought up the toilet because we had referred that into public safety, thinking that it was a public safety project. We were told it is not a public safety. While it might have, while it might have public safety implications, public safety is, you know, not in charge of putting in the toilet. And so I have communicated with President Coughlin that the committee would like some, some direction on that, you know, or council needs direction on that. What department is in charge of this from the administration?
Director Riley, did we, I know I talked to you the other day about where that ten thousand dollars ended up.
Yeah, yeah, the, the funding source is actually in the city council's budget where it landed. But again, who's going to implement? It's still general fund money, but it's in this council budget.
Okay, so that wasn't there. Okay, good to know. So on that item, looking for, if you're looking for a direction from well, so, so Public Safety doesn't have a recommendation on what to do. Do we have public work or something given, but?
Is it okay if I ask?
Well, no, Public Safety does not have a recommendation. It has not gone through. We were going to discuss it and there was a lot of pushback. It's, it's not really where does it, where's its home? It's not, if it's council budget, does that mean we do the work to make it happen? What, I don't understand, it's council's budget, does that, what does that mean in answer to?
It's in our budget.
Can I do some clarifying on this issue? So we've been told in the past that it was going to be in a different, that it wasn't going to be in the public safety arena and also our chiefs don't want to manage it, right?
Right.
The direction from council, right? We said we're going to refer it to public safety, but we don't have. Then Mayor Wheeler, do you have any idea where, which department you're going to assign this project to? And understanding that we don't, you do want us to come to meet with stakeholders to discuss this issue, like Marvin Williams, et cetera.
Yeah, programs set up, the whole, it's ready to go. Meeting with, as we do with programs, meeting with the neighbors down there. They'd like to meet with council leadership to learn more about this program.
Sounds good. So are you going to bring something to present to council on how to implement this or if it is in council's budget, I believe we need to give approval on spending the funds?
Leave it up to you to reach out. If you want to reach out to the leadership, I can set you up a meeting, I can.
Sorry, may I? I heard you have a proposal on how to implement a.
Yeah, the proposals includes outreach. And so we, we met, there was a lot of pushback from the neighborhood about location and about unintended consequences. So since it's not my program to administer, I felt it was important for you to hear it because this is your program.
So the outreach was, the outreach was conducted by the mayor's office. But it's a council. Um, but it's a council project.
Yeah, we definitely have some separation of powers. So Mayor, I just wanna be clear. Do you have a, a proposed location and way to spend the money? Am I hearing that correctly or is that not the case?
There's an, I, you know, I think at this point, it's, it's gonna be better to hear from the public. Um, so I don't have a proposal yet.
So you don't have a proposal to spend the?
Where to, where to locate it, where to locate it. I, I think the public uh, needs to weigh in like we do with all of our processes that we, we bring forward. We have a public, we give the public an opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah, please. I would like suggestions on a path forward for this because we're kind of in a impasse.
To be fair, Mayor, um, when we do receive public comment, that's after we have a proposal. And so I guess specifically, which department will handle this? Will it be Public Works or will it be Public Safety?
Pub, Public Safety.
Public.
Or Public, actually, it's gonna be Public Works.
Public Works will manage this project.
Oh, you know, as far as the, um, you know, changing out the whatever toilet paper and stuff like that. Yeah, that'll be Public Works.
Okay, so it is in council budget, but the department that's going to be in charge of this is Public Works. So, so this needs to go through. So that we did not discuss this specifically because we didn't wanna breach forum. Okay? So we are sending this issue to Public Works and it should be on your agenda.
Or if you just, to me, sorry, or procedure, yeah. So the suggestion is to send it to Public Works and, yeah, which I, which I agree with then. It's at the proper department.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Now, thank you. Yes, Michael Diva. And put on that.
Yeah, I just wanna, it seems like we're all sort of surprised how this is coming together. And this is exactly how I remember the discussion coming out of budget. That the council decided that public safety, even if it's only the three council members on public safety, we're gonna come up with a plan to move this forward. So I don't know who on public safety. Well.
Yeah, no, that.
That's it. And I remember the administration all kind of doing, uh, you know, not it, because it doesn't, it's not a good fit. We don't, we don't do a lot of social service programs. So now if we wanna kick it to Public Works, we can, I mean, if, but who's deciding that? Again, I feel like now Public Safety just did a not it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. It's getting punted around. So I like that suggestion of study session from ideas. Yeah.
That was Attorney Fennel's suggestion. Bring it to the larger group. So I think then that's what we need to do is kick it around through study session again. And it's not that we don't want to play not it. It's that our people who are staff people that were there were saying, we're not, we don't wanna do this. Right? And so thank you very much for your pushback on that.
I understand it, yeah. Quinn, you have anything to add and then we'll wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah.
For the study session.
As the third member of, uh, Public Safety who was there, um, I think, I think what might be helpful is, and, and I don't know, I, I don't wanna put more on Attorney Fennel's plate, but another, just clarification of, you know, separation of powers. And, and once we fund something, which is the legislative power, does that get kicked into the administration? And, you know, we don't really have a control of priority or when it gets done or anything like that. And I was thinking the exact same thing that Michael brought up. Like this was something that some folks on council were very, very passionate about. And it seemed like a pet project and they were gonna run with it. And now it seems like it's being punted. So what I think needs to happen is, um, a little bit of clarification maybe from the city attorney of whether or not, like, just because we fund something, is it going to happen? And how much control does council have? Uh, abstracting it, there's other things, right? We've funded the DEI position. There's discussion about how much council is involved in that role, um, versus the administration. And I just wanna make sure that those abstract rules are being applied consistently through whatever council is funding. I, I don't wanna, you know, create a separation of powers issue and, and get into the mayor's business. Um, but I also wanna make sure that, that when we are funding something and taking something on, we understand what that actually means. Um, so it seems like there needs to be a little bit of clarification around some things.
Thank you. Well said. So let's put that, um, over the Attorney Fennel and work on that for, uh, Fennel, Fennel for the next, next study session. That sounds good. All right, thank you. It'll be very helpful considering, yeah, large number of items, not just this one, but it's just good to be clear. All right, moving along, uh, other regional and other committees slash boards, put briefings on anything that affects council. ARCC, go ahead. Yep, Kids Have Transit, et cetera. Oh, go ahead.
Does anybody have anything that they wanna have come before Kids Have Transit? Okay, so just, um, there's a ridership report, which I'll be sending out to all of you. Um, the obvious, you know, in case it's not a, it's not a surprise, Bremerton has on beyond the lion's share of the ridership. Um, the rest of, al- almost the rest, all the rest of the meeting was about where they, they finally landed on a site for, uh, the Seattle side that would be used just for Kids Have Transit. It's Pier 48, right near the stadium. So I ask just to be really certain that, um, when a woman alone on a dark night goes out and it's not a game night, that there's really strong protections so that that woman, it, it, you know, who might not be surrounded by a, a crowd of people. Um, it has safe, it, you know, is safe on her way to, or anyone vulnerable, really. But I just chose a woman because it's International Women's Day. Um, so anyhow, they have a place. They're doing the, they, it's, it's narrowed down to, to Pier 48. Uh, the, the rest of it is they're gonna condemn something in Port Orchard, nothing to do with us. Um, that was it, pretty much from Kids Have Transit.
Excellent. Anyone else? Eric?
Does Pier 48 already have a dock or is this something that's five years from now?
Pier 48 does have a dock. It seems to be in decent shape. They're using it for staging. Um, it's direct, it, it's directly opposite the stadium, maybe very slightly to the north of the stadium.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a real place.
No, that's good news. My office is right near there, so I can start taking passenger.
Well, all right. But yeah, that's, it's, they're just starting the scoping, so it's down the line.
Perfect. I'll brief out that, uh, Kids of 901 met the other day, all routine on, let's say, funding, some really good statistics on the number of calls they get. I can try and forward along that information. And then similarly, I've been attending all the Peta Sound Regional Council, um, meetings and a couple of slides I'll try and forward. Really good discussions on housing across the Peta Sound. Some good statistics put out there and a lot of discussion on some of the infrastructure money flowing down from the federal government through, through PSRC, which the city can then apply for. Um, but nothing, uh, not that it's a groundbreaking, but great regular work. And all right, any other regional briefings?
It's not a regional briefing and we will have one other. I will have our city council meeting before that. But I just wanted to, uh, talk about just briefly that, um, there's going to be a, um, meeting to discuss temporary board membership for the Bremerton Farmers Market.
Fair enough, but that's not a regional or other committee meeting that we've attended.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sticking on.
On Thursday.
Sticking on agenda here.
March 16th, Minnetonka Real Estate.
All right, next up, item B5 is council member Anna Mokler has two minutes to present a proposal to pursue new language for chapter 20 dot 14 entitled Critical Areas and chapter 20 dot 15 titled Landscaping of the BMC. So per our discussion on rules and procedures, not in rule four, Anna has two minutes to present and we'll give a thumbs up or thumbs down to see if we have a majority, if we wanna even hear more about it. Sorry to be blunt, but that was our, our discussion. So Anna, please, uh, take it away.
Did all of you have a chance to read even the first few pages of this? Okay, so one thing that I omitted that I should have included is the push for native vegetation is because these are plants that grew up here. They evolved with this soil. They evolved with this climate. They evolved with the pollinators, the predators, they, um, the soil. It's, that's the reason. And a nice side benefit of that is that after a couple of years of watering, they're established and don't require a permanent irrigation system. Um, the many ways that they interact with wildlife, I only have two minutes I'm not going into. Um, with critical areas, uh, let me just, cause I have two minutes, um, I, there's a large wetland, for example, below Pendergast Park. It's a series of beaver dams with otter pups, herons, raptors, eagles, osprey. It's not coming to us to say, I need a, a second contract amendment. It's a self-sustaining system that is purifying our water. Um, I can't speak to the other critical areas and I'm not trying to put the, you know, that's outside my scope. The, um, these, these ordinances need updating. I'd like to update them, um, as I've shown in the scope of work by comparing them to a number of nearby municipalities. And, um, bring the results to you for you to approve or deny. And that's it.
I'm just gonna look to council and see if we have four more thumbs up to, uh, continue discussing this in the future. All right, not seeing them. Let's see, two thumbs up, three. Well, it would be two, if, we can either discuss it now if we want to, but an action item or, yeah, I'll say, okay, thumbs up to just discuss it briefly now, um, if there's any interest. Or to, or discuss another date. Yeah, we can do that too. Okay. All right, we'll move it to another, uh, agenda. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Next up, last, nope, second to last item is, uh, B6. Um, so this'll be information only, which, it's going forward. It says information only on the agenda. I'm gonna take that as strictly information only means no questions, no comments. It's just somebody briefing out information to us. Um, so I'll make that clear for just any, any future item from anybody.
Looking at you Denise.
Yeah, so in this case, oh yes, so sorry, just to read the title, Quinn Dennehy, um, and Attorney Fennel are here to present information only briefing on proposed ordinance to create a permanent race equity slash DEI commission.
Great. Um, I have some PowerPoint slides. I don't know. You could bring up the first one. Um, so the, the, the goal is to create a citizen-led institutionalized mechanism for analyzing city systems, policies, budgets, agendas, goals, practices, and actions through a race equity lens with the goal of eliminating systemic racism within the city of Bremerton. So procedural posture, just to get everybody up to speed. Um, the REAC or Race Equity Advisory Committee was formed by motion in 2020 in response to racial unrest in the United States. Um, and, and a desire to do something at the local level. Uh, this was done by motion, which didn't conform with the charter, which requires committees, um, and commissions to be, uh, appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council. So this ordinance is a fix on that to create a permanent commission, um, where those folks would have input into both branches of government, both the executive and the legislative, where the ad hoc committee that, um, basically dissolved at the end of last year, um, was only advising city council. That, um, if you move on to the next slide, um, you know, one of the big things that I do when I present is try to get at the why. Um, you know, 34% of Bremerton residents identify as BIPOC. If you don't know what BIPOC is, it's black, indigenous, and people of color. Um, according to the 2020 US Census, 34% of Bremerton residents identify as BIPOC. Um, when we look at things at a local level, a lot of things that we're looking at right now in the council priorities are about affordable housing. Um, the ability to access, um, resources, which, which goes towards median income as well as wealth. And take a look at those statistics. I don't think anybody's gonna be surprised by the wealth gap that is, does not track statistically, right? Like if you had 30% of a population being BIPOC in a fair society, 30% of those residents, you know, the entire population, um, sorry, would be low income or homeless. And there's definitely gaps there. If you move on to the next one, um, there has been a little focus on, well, why are we just focusing on race instead of all areas of oppression? Well, if you look at social science research, um, women, when you look at groups of women and life outcomes and, um, issues of, of, of social disparity, BIPOC women fare the worst, BIPOC LGBTQ members fare the worst, BIPOC people with disabilities, BIPOC religious minorities, BIPOC immigrants. So if you really want to focus on a problem, race is the problem in the United States because of our social constructs, um, that we've dealt with through history. If you go onto the next slide, um, a lot of people have kind of looked at this. There's a difference between equality and equity. Equality is everybody gets the same things. Equity is looking at what people need in order to access the same opportunities. So if you look at the ballgame, that's the access to opportunity. Think about housing, think about long life expectancy, think about healthcare. The fence are institutional barriers and, um, the different sized humans represent different uh, oppressed groups or non-oppressed groups and, and what people actually need in order to assess that. If you move on to the next side, I really like this. This is reality. If you look at the history of racism in the United States, uh, the person on that, you know, six boxes plus being tall are, are us. It's, it's white folks. Um, and then you go to the right, the, the hole that has been dug by institutions, by laws, by, um, structural barriers is where people of color start off. Um, and then you can look at what equality, equity, and then liberation, which is really wh- what I get excited about is removing barriers for all anyway. Um, but really what we wanna try to go is going from reality to equity, uh, before we get to that liberation state. So the way we do that at the local level, and a lot of local jurisdictions have done, um, I think, go on to the next one. Is through the ordinance. Um, so as you look through the ordinance, what I did is I provided two ordinances. I provided the comments from the ordinance that, I'm sorry. So Brett and Kylie drafted an ordinance on my request based on Bainbridge Island early in 2022, I believe. Um, we took that to the committee just as kind of like a rough structure of like, here's how Bainbridge Island does it. We took it and over the entire year, I think we had at least three or four full meetings dedicated for the Race Equity Advisory Committee to go through and change it, make comments, go through the meat grinder. And what I promised them is that I would present that recommendation from the committee to you all. Uh, I do have that document, but I also have a document that I edited based on legal advice. Um, there were some separation of power issues, some conforming with the charter issues. So there's a second reiteration. Um, that one also has a couple of legal comments. I'm gonna clean that up before the next study session. So just go ahead and look at both the proposal from last year's REAC and the one that went through legal and myself. And these are some guiding questions that I'd like you to think about when we actually do discuss it. Um, what would council like REAC to look like? What type of funding does council hope to provide REAC? How will council ensure REAC works with the DEI manager? How does council wish to communicate with REAC? And how do we ensure our own white privilege does not interfere with our decisions regarding REAC? Like really come from a place of, you know, just because we haven't had the same, uh, life experience and blocked opportunities that people of color have had, that should not be framing our, our decision-making. We should be framing it from recommendations from the community, specifically community of color. And that's, that's where this REAC committee kind of has funneled through. Uh, with that, I'll just turn it over to, uh, Attorney Fennel, who's done a ton, ton, ton of work, especially with me the, the last year, um, and, and really, um, i- is working hard to make sure that whatever our product is conforms and, and works really well. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Quinn. So, um, I'm gonna talk about the, the ordinance that is, um, the Quinn share that has, it's like Dennehy with legal advice, I think is the title. So when you're looking for your, your materials after you leave here, that's the one, um, that I want you to relate these comments to. Um, and it's just really the big question. So the, to keep in mind that the DEI person, um, that will be on staff, that was, um, DEI is different than REAC, um, in that it, it's a wider group. You think about like how we had the discussion about goals in 2022, about are they gonna be racist, race-centered? Or are they gonna be wider? So that's a big question for council to consider. Is this group gonna be, um, race-centered or is it going to be, um, all, um, groups that have, um, encountered oppression? So I'd say just keep that in mind. The next thing is just to consider, um, and this is a, a risk management issue, whether or not the commission will be able to accept public comment at their meetings. And this is a big one to, to keep in mind, if, for all of you have had to moderate meetings. When, um, our charter requires that all committee meetings be open to the public. That's our charter requirement. OPMA actually doesn't apply to advisory committees. But what happens is when that advisory committee accepts public comment, then it comes under OPMA and then subjects, um, the members that are conducting the meeting, um, to the OPMA requirements. It also means that whoever's moderating the meeting has to moderate in conformance with um, the law and the constitutional requirements, um, of First Amendment, um, which can also um, be a, an area in which the city is exposed to risks. So those, that's another thing is whether or not the committee meetings are going to be advisory so that the folks, um, at the meeting can talk amongst themselves. They could even talk outside of, um, you know, in, in smaller groups, it, it's a little tricky because our charter actually has that requirement, but the OPMA doesn't. If, if they happen to break quorum, it's not a legal issue where everyone's gonna get fined, um, $500. It would be, you know, that shouldn't happen because it's not in compliance with the charter. So that's the other one. Um, also, it's just, look at the, um, removal. We've had a removal come up, uh, recently in, in a different commission. And it's not unlike some of the other ones, I'll say that, but it's just something to think about. Um, and so, uh, i- if someone on the committee was, um, let's say, what we were just talking about, like taking an action that was subjecting the city to liability. Do you want, um, it might be awkward for the other committee members to be put in the position to have to make the call to remove them instead of, um, basically being able to be taken off the same way they came on by the council. Um, and so keep that in mind. Um, and other than that, the meetings and the powers and duties is a big section that came, um, in large part from Bainbridge Island. Um, it's pretty specific and, um, you know, this is supposed to, it's just gonna be codified in our code. And so, um, being broad might give that more flexibility. And in particular, there's some discussion about a racial equity action plan and implementation strategy. We don't have a racial action, what do you, action plan right now? Um, might be like, you know, a goal for council in 2024 because we have these 2023 goals related to this. Maybe that's the next step. But that's what's in here and that's because I think that's what Bainbridge Island had. Um, so those are things to keep in mind and happy to keep working on this with you guys.
La- last comment, sorry. Um, I also included two documents from King County. Um, I, I interviewed there and was offered a position that I ultimately turned down, but I was really, really, really fascinated and really impressed with these two documents. Um, one is basically an assessment of all of the outcomes that happen in King County based on race. So basically identifying the problem, uh, that we all deal with homelessness, housing instability, um, access to parks, uh, Denise, you know, all, all of these things that are near and dear to our house, to, to our hearts and how that plays out racially. And then the second document is their strategic plan from 2016 to 2022 on how they plan to address that. So that I know that there's a lot of questions about, you know, why do we need this in, in local government? Um, go ahead and take these two weeks to mull through those documents. And I think a lot of your questions will be answered. Thanks a lot.
Excellent. Thanks so much to both of you. And yes, so in two weeks, we'll actually talk and discuss this and dig into the meat of how to, uh, best accomplish this council goal and priority and get this crafted. Excellent. All right. Now finally, we're at other general council business. So sorry to cut you off to be proper earlier, but this would be a good point if you want to bring up that meeting.
Well, I apologize for being a little sassy, President Kaufman. Um, and so, well, it was not that, come on, y'all have seen me sassier. I want to, just, uh, just, what I was saying is that we all know that there's been some issues. Well, I don't know if we all know, but now we do. There's been some issues with, uh, the farmer's market. There's been a lot of, um, stitching up that, that it turns out needs to happen for it to, to occur this year. So in an effort to try to get it rolling, um, for this year, uh, there's gonna be a meeting at the Minnetonka Real Estate Company on Thursday, March 16th at 5:30 for, uh, all those who are interested in being prospective board members temporarily, um, uh, or even volunteering, but they need a lot of help. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you, President Kaufman.
Briefly?
It's just temporary board members. You'd just like be a board member for this one time. It would not, yeah.
And I've got two items, just a reminder, St. Patrick's Day Parade this Saturday, um, starts at 11. I'm waiting to get information exactly where, where it'll line up, but, um, council will have its own section to march in. So and bring, I forgot to mention, bring significant others, friends, family, if you want to march with us, so, um, more than welcome. And, uh, remember to order your unique embroider, unique embroidery items. Hopefully by this Wednesday, I'm guilty of procrastinating as well. Um, but again, not a hard, hard deadline, but I don't want, I want them to know that the orders are coming. So just those two reminders. Um, and with that, we'll now convene for an executive session for 20 minutes. Oh, I'm so sorry. My bad. Sorry, you had another general business item. My bad. Thank you.
It's the thing that came from beside. Um, so I was following up on the communication director. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Rick Brazidis, but his daughter Tori has moved back to Bremerton from Hansville. Um, she is a communications person. And we had, um, we spoke for about an hour or so and distilled what would be the duties of different levels of the communication director. Um, I'd like to bring this up in the future. For right now, I'm just gonna say high points are salary would be 16 to 90K. Um, and there are three elements of what's important about it.
Can I propose, this is, this is on our council golden priority. So I'll make sure that we get to talking about it this year. Um.
I'm asking if there's interest in hearing about this at a future time, if not now.
No, I think it's on our goals and priorities. So we will be talking about it this year. We will be giving that item done, so.
All right, I'd like to hit these three points if that's okay. Okay, really quick. Um, what is the position called? Where does it nest? That is, who does it report to? Um, and how is it involved in decisions? Um, there's also a list of skills, which I'll shoot you at a future time.
Perfect.
I have a second good of the order thing.
All right.
Snacks. When you invite people to your home for dinner time.
How about, Anna, talk, talk to me individually on this, talk to me individually on this one, if you're requesting, um, items for council. Okay, folks, I need to say this for the, for the record. All right, but hold on, hold on. Section C, executive session, council will now convene for an executive session for 20 minutes to discuss potential litigation per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, section 1 subsection I. No action is anticipated. We'll reconvene in 20 minutes.